Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for April the 3rd, 2025. I'm Michael O'Reilly, the chairman. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:07. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to call the roll, starting on my right.
I'm Nick Smiglino, alternate commissioner.
Dominic Venetia, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Leanne Brosie, commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, commissioner.
Robert Westlin, commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you. This time will be for general public participation. For those online, Kathleen, you want to instruct them?
Yes.
How do we know who's online?
On my hand corner, there's six people.
I can see.
Oh, wow, Ryan, that's well done, dude.
That is what, that is.
I can't even see.
So I can see it. So we have new security protocols for Zoom. One of that includes that the boxes that this commission would typically see on the screen here will no longer be able to be seen. I can see all of the public participants through the console that is up here. If you are attending the meeting remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to mute yourself at the beginning of the meeting. If you wish to speak during the public participation portions of the meeting, you have to use the raised hand function. If you're participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it's your turn to speak. The video feature has also been disabled for public participation. So when they do speak, we will only be able to hear their voice. We will not be able to see them. And we can do that. While we're here, though, James De Mayo is on tonight, our town engineer, and in order for him not to have to comply with those same requirements, I am making him co-host so he knows that he can mute and unmute himself at will during the meeting. If at any point I unmute someone and then they mute themselves or I mute them after they're done speaking, they cannot unmute themselves again, so they'd have to raise their hand again in order to speak another time.
All right. Everyone on the stand side. All right, so this is general public participation time. Now, this is not for comments about tonight's public hearing. This is for other business that might like to let the commission know for any other questions you might have, not pertaining to tonight's agenda. Anyone online that would like to participate in general public participation, raise your hand. Or anyone in the audience that would like to participate, raise your hand. I don't know if we have anyone online.
I don't see any raising.
Come right up. So please state your name and address in the microphone and then sign in on the clipboard. We should have one. And please address the commission, not the applicants or the audience.
Hey, buddy. My name is Russell Watkins. I live on 15 Woodcrest Road in Monroe. So just had a general concern for some regulations that want to bring to your attention. My wife and I came back from Christmas vacation to find two large yellow commercial shipping containers in our neighbor's property. And basically shipping containers that are meant for a railway or a cargo ship. And they are very visible to my neighbor. I also got to meet some of our other neighbors that are pretty unhappy about this as well. And just really concerned, we've come to learn that there are no regulations for commercial shipping containers, probably because you guys never thought you'd have to think on this. But basically, it's been a couple of months. We haven't really been able to gain any traction here. And a couple of really concerns here is number one, which is probably the general aesthetics of the neighborhood way down. They're giant, they're yellow, they say Mediterranean shipping out in them. I have a couple of pictures here. You guys need them, but I'm sure you don't. But the other thing, too, is they're just to be plain, they're pretty sketchy. Every time someone comes over, we have this fun conversation, just like, I wonder what they're doing over there, right? It's just like, why do they have shipping containers? And really just looking to get some traction here, to put some regulation in here. I know that we have the 10%, you know, of your property that can't be covered, but the reality is if you have a 2,000 square foot house, you could put eight of these on your property, right? And I do understand that people need additional storage at times, but you know, we have barns for that, you can buy plenty of different storage options at One Evo. We've just got some great new businesses that will provide off-site storage facilities, right? So definitely, you know, understand that as well. But overall, just really looking to see if we can ban commercial shipping containers for residential property and would really appreciate that.
Have you spoken to the zoning enforcement officer? Oh, so you've talked to staff about it?
We have, yeah, and very helpful. And I don't know if the town ordinance here, I apologize for that. Email was coming across difficult, but really just trying to get to here.
Okay, which street are you on?
We're on Woody Crest Road, so right out of by the Trumpo Monroe line, 500.
All right. Well, thank you for your.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Right up.
We have the neighbors.
Well, come up. During the party. Put yours, yours.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
We also have a picture.
Put your concerns on record, name and address, and sign in.
We live on, and my wife and I live on 64 Monroe Road. This is regarding staying house next door to us and Russell regarding these commercial containers on residential property. Not only one, but two containers, you know, 30, 40 foot long. We look out our windows or our backyard, this is what we're seeing. So not only is it an eyesore, I think it's degrading everybody around this property. I think it's degrading their property value as well. You know, I understand people need storage, there's other alternatives, you know, garage, shed, maybe for a storage site or whatever, but to have to look at these eyesore every day on a permanent basis, I think something should be done about it.
Can I just comment? Yes. Well, I just want to let you guys know that we're in the process of airing these concerns and on the subcommittee level, writing regulations about this very subject. And we completely agree with you and we think it's an eyesore, it's a problem, and we're addressing it as we go along here. So that'll be dealt with very, very soon.
Would you like to proceed?
Sure. Yeah, just bring it up and we'll pass it along.
Completely agree, it's a total eyesore.
And there's two of them. I don't think anyone needs two giant containers to put household items in, and that's.
Kind of residential area, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here or online that would like to participate? Or have any questions or comments with the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first public hearing. This is SCP 2025-01, file number 1665, 1536, and 1564 Monroe Turnpike. Do you have the notices or?
I have. Yes. Good luck. Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held April 3rd. In accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 3rd, 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting at Monroe Town Hall with in-person attendees. SCP 2025-01, file 1665, 1536, and 1564 Monroe Turnpike, application for a special exception permit for an eight lot cluster development subdivision located at 1536 and 1564 Monroe Turnpike, assessor's map 150, lot 167, 168. Jan's Land Development LLC, owner, applicant, J. Edwards and Associates LLC representative. Notice was published in Connecticut Post twice, once on March 14th and again on March 21st.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. And Kathleen, you have the exhibits to read into the record.
The first exhibit is the application and plan set by J. Edwards and Associates. Exhibit two is the comments from the Town of Monroe Health Department, document dated March 11th, 2025. Exhibit three is the certified mail receipts from the applicant. Exhibit four is the Conservation and Water Resource Commission comments dated March 19th, 2025. Exhibit five is Town of Monroe EMS comments dated March 24th, 2025. Exhibit six is the Town of Monroe Engineer comments dated March 24th, 2025. Exhibit seven is the Planning and Zoning Administrator Report dated March 24th, 2025. Exhibit eight is a letter from the neighbor dated 3/26/2025. Exhibit nine is the comments from the Town of Monroe Tree Warden dated March 27th, 2025. Exhibit 10 is the Town of Monroe Fire Marshal comments dated March 27th, 2025. Exhibit 11 is a neighbor from the neighbor York. Exhibit 12 is the revised set of plans by J. Edwards and Associates dated April 1st, 2025. Exhibit 13 is a later letter from the neighbor, Theo Rutt. Exhibit 14 is a letter from neighbor and supporting material, Ms. Jelly. Exhibit 15 is the labor from the, letter from the neighbor, Kelly Hengis Corano and Chris Corano, April 3rd, 2025. And exhibit 16 is a letter from the neighbor, Kay Johnson, dated April 3rd, 2025. And so several of those last ones, I think exhibits 11 to 16, this commission did not get in their previous packets because they were submitted subsequent to your packets. They were delivered, submitted earlier this week, several today. So those are all in your packets that are at your table this evening.
Okay, and for the applicant, we have.
Good evening. I'm Rick and I'm Jason Edwards, J. Edwards Associates with the New Surveyors Office located at 227 Stephanie Road in Houston. My office is on the engineering and land surveying, as well as the application. This project, property is located essentially on the opposite side of the road, Stevens Lumber, the former Stevens Lumber site, which is now Stevens Bryce Park. It's just south of the intersection of Brookshire Road and Monroe Turnpike. That, that, or bounded by Monroe Turnpike to the west. Condon Street cuts through here, Almond River comes around here, and the down road comes up along the east side on the south end. It's probably something that would be Mary Drive that comes to the coal site and ends out up here. So I believe it's the entire, you know, this property in the middle. This is the subdivision map from, from the plan set that you have. See that we're applying the new cluster development guidelines that were recently adopted, I guess, by the commission. I mean, if you recall, those allow for a reduction in both standards for your lots in RF2 and RF3 in exchange for a larger open space area near the issue. You create an open space that protects the more environmentally sensitive area, plus the development in one section, preserve more. In this case, we're preserving 18 acres, which I believe is roughly, it's close to 50%, if not more than 50%. Oops. Sorry. Be honest with you for that number, but it's in the neighborhood of half properties being preserved open space. This area, we went through the wetlands department, got a wetlands approval, which thoroughly reviewed by both our applicants, experts from an environmental standpoint, as well as a third-party review was done. And in the end, the third-party reviewer, as well as our experts, made an agreement on where the conservation meetings would be, the open space limits, and thought that this was the best alternative for the roadway as well as the development itself. So just to go through the cluster development, this is just snips out of your regulations. The cluster is defined as a form of subdivision, which the lot size is maybe reduced in exchange for the provision of a permanent open space, the volume has maybe improved by the commission. Qualifying standards, these are, I believe, the qualifying standards are new. This is what was recently adopted. They have to be located in RF2 or RF4, where you, which we are. The minimum full cluster size has got to be greater than 50 acres, which we're, we're not. And we have to have at least 200 feet of frontage on the public highway, which we have well more than that. So qualified in that regard. This is just a breakdown of what the standards, the conventional mold standards, you have the left side here, so your minimum square would be 175, the frontage would be 200, your setbacks are 50, 30, and 30, whereas for the, in the area, I think one is two acres. For RF2 in the cluster, you can run under one acre, have 135 by 135 square. The areas are, the frontage is reduced to 150, and then your setbacks are finally closer inside of there. Other than that, the standards, I believe, are all the same. So in this case, we actually, you know, this is the other requirement. The regulations require that we not have, in a cluster development, you cannot have more lots than would be feasible within a conventional subdivision layout. So in this case, we had generated just an alternate plan based on the area. You know, we could get 12 lots potentially with a very small open space. Now that, you know, I think probably we wouldn't build some of these with the wetlands, but you know, we went down to eight lots, and the lots are all roughly an acre and a half these size, so we didn't feel that an acre was really suitable for the wells and septic that we were going to need on this site. So we, we feel that was a compromise between the 12 that could be feasible and, you know, well, site would yield. This is just to give a little perspective on to the size of these lots relative to the surrounding neighborhood. You know, the purple is obviously the new lots, to the, directly to the, that's actually the east area, top of the page. This is the down road neighborhood, and you'll see the lots that we're proposing are actually larger than most everything in that neighborhood. Those are older lots that wouldn't be current zone. So the acre and a half size actually is larger lots than these. You come all the way up to the other, to the other side of the open space, Manor Lane, and those are two acre lots, but you see that they're, they're close in size. Some of these are approaching two acres, so you know, this could fit with the neighborhood here, and we're not coming in with a, you know, a smaller, higher density neighborhood to the east. So just a summary of what is being proposed. 800 feet of new road, that would be public road, town road, eight year single family homes, would be 18 acres of open space. Properties would be serviced by wells and septic. We have done extensive soil testing for the septic systems. They've, I believe, been redeemed by health to have, and I think we've gotten a positive sign off from the health department, so those are all compliant. Each one of these would still require that we come back for a separate, you know, building permit and design per lot, as typical house plan, and these are just to show feasibility. The property in general slopes from the top of the page down towards Monroe Turnpike, so we are proposing a drainage system, stormwater collection system, both on the properties as well as the roadway itself, without catch basins. All of that drainage is dispersed out into three different stormwater basins, that's an outlet to, there's two, just two crossings under 111 that exist. We're not increasing any peak runoff or volume. Everything needs the guidelines. It's been reviewed thoroughly by the town engineer under the wetlands application. He had a few more comments that we responded to last week, but I don't think he had a chance to give us a final review yet, so we're very close to being positive sign off Again, there was a extensive, very extensive environmental review done of the property. Matt obviously is one of the environmental experts that we have in our application team. He's here to talk about that if there are any questions. This is just the site plan, if there are any questions specific to it, I can answer them, but each site has got a building rectangle as well as septic system, a feasible septic location, the lots on the uphill side of the road, on-site stormwater everything as well, to account for whatever previous area shown here. If there's any previous area that's greater than what we show, it would have been sized by combination. There is some room in the stormwater infrastructure that's for the subdivision to take some of that, but again, that would all have to be studied as part of the building for the application. This is just a blow up of the lots at the end of the coal site, so we've got a couple of real lots there. We have an extensive erosion control and sediment plan. This again was reviewed by the town engineer numerous times, it's gone through a lot of hidden comments, and I think we addressed all of them related to this. This is a landscape plan that was provided with the application, and there were some changes in response to tree warding comments and some zoning comments as well. So Matt's here to talk about this. I think that's about all I was going to go through.
Good evening, and Matt, you're top landscape architect, professional wetland scientist at Kermel's Department of Land Solutions, I was on the bench for the wetlands and water purchase at Mon Park, this is the area, and currently on the vegetation parks and wrecked border. I can hear the landscaping plan that you have in front of you. Just start off the plant list down here at the bottom, it adds the palm leaves, the keys, scientific names, how many? I'd just like to start with the top of this plant list. Generally, we have the street trees, the shade trees, those are large and brown ones. Those like to place along the kind of the street, could provide shading, shading reduces thermal pollution, which is good for wildlife, but downstream, down the slope. The shade trees include a red maple, pin oak, swamp pine oak, and hackberry. And then in the plant list, if you get, go down the next layer here, we have the understory trees, I mean, the red bud and chads. Here, all of these trees are native so far. And it's just look in the middle of the plant list, we have the evergreen trees, like to group those together, the kind of form of, not thinking, but maybe standing with them. Those include the meringue holly, norway spruce, and white pine. Generally, I don't use white pine, but in this area, we do have pretty far back from the roadside where we can use, it's a great tree for wildlife habitat. And then in the very bottom of the plant list, we have the shrubs, are just using two shrub types, bayberry and spice bush, just using those to, because the area tend not to be so good. Those are mainly, those shrubs are mainly planted along the basin areas here. And there's also a a second fern at the very bottom. And then at the, where there's a discharge point from the, I used to do a lot when there's a discharge point, I do have plantings just down slope for the discharge point. The basins get seeded with two different types mixed into the bottom, and it's a wet bottom seed mix, kind of, that has moist, plants adapted to moist conditions, and then there's a side slope, which is obviously a growing area. The plant list reviewed by the tree warding made some comments, mainly reducing the amount of white pines. Some of these trees along the street were, were on, well, the, I guess, the right lane, so those trees got moved back, so all of these trees are on the private lots now. And the detail is added up here. And that is it. Quickly, if there's any questions that we have.
All natives, you had started to say that we're natives.
Except for the norway spruce, which, you know, it's pretty wild one, what do you need? There's not many evergreens that you can plant that much, you could, but.
Thank you, thank you. Tom, I think there's a question. Oh, it's only one more.
You mentioned native trees?
Yes.
How many are there?
I don't think it matters.
Percentage ones?
Of all of them except for the norway spruce. And there's.
Sorry.
And it's a 21 norway spruce that is probably, and we just, 70 trees, if you're 70 trees.
Well, it's okay to have a normal percentage of native trees, but overabundant, they're not too friendly with farmers and people that have fruit trees along that line. So I would just caution you to reconsider on having all native.
I mean, you probably would switch to, like, the norway spruce to, like, a red seeder, which doesn't grow as long, but it could be native.
People in the area that are trying to have normal life, those are detrimental.
We could, you know, we could switch that to a red.
Thank you.
Any other questions up here? Okay. I was wondering when you were going to stand up. Been missing you.
Yeah, sure. Chair of the Mission, Christian Zilic, so you're up, you're up, Ken. Basically, I've gone through the presentation, but I did want to touch on the cluster development regulations and how we feel this meets your, this new regulation. It's almost like I feel like this application kind of ruins things for me in the future because of how much is proposed with this application. You know, again, as, as Jason pointed out, a conventional subdivision laid out 12 lots, which under the cluster development reg would allow us to propose 12 lots, we're proposing eight here. Site that's well above your minimum lot area required for cluster development, 15 acres is the minimum, we're going to double, quadruple the amount of frontage. I think most importantly, we have a minimum required open space of 34%, and this application was proposing 57.8%, which is more than one and a half times your requirement. And, you know, you might think, you know, again, proposing that much extra open space that we would be proposing the maximum number of lots, but again, we're not. And I think you might also think that we would be proposing lots at the minimum lot area, and we're not. None of them are at the minimum lot area. In fact, half of the lots exceed the minimum lot area if this cluster development was in RF3 zone, not an RF2 zone. So your cluster development regulations require a minimum of one acre for RF2 underlying, for the underlying zone, and one and a half acres for RF3 zone. We have four lots that are over one and a half acres, and none of them are close to approaching. The others are 1.4, I think there's a couple that are 1.3. So none of them are close to the minimum lot area. We meet all the standards. And, you know, again, even though this is a cluster development, the majority of these lots actually also exceed the frontage requirements RF2 zone, some of them by multiple. So they're not particularly thorough either for a cluster development, they're not down to the minimum of a lot of these lots. And I think the other thing that, I mean, you created the reg, so, so you know this, but your setback standards are also not that far off from, from what you define an RF2 zone anyway. Their front setback is the exact same as the RF2 zone, and your side and rear setbacks for the cluster developments are only five feet shorter than you would normally have in an RF2 zone. So still, even though it's a quote unquote cluster development, still requires significant amount of buffering on these lots. Height's the same as you would have in the RF2 zone, so a lot of those standards are a. are essentially the same. And then, you know, I think another thing you look at is, you know, conforming to the, uh, the neighborhood. And, uh, again, I think this application is extremely one considerate and unique in that, um, these lots are actually bigger than any of the residential lots that they have bought. Uh, some types significantly, there's, there's a lot of lots here that are under an acre. And again, um, we have lots here that are above one and a half acres, uh, the lowest, I think, again, is, is, is around one and a half acres. Your standards also talk about, um, uh, septic systems and, and wells, and I'll just note that the health department did submit comments regarding, um, that the soils were suitable for septic, uh, in this subdivision. And also just to get a point out, because I did see, I was able to review some of the letters that came in today, um, that, uh, you know, this site is downgrade from Downs Road, um, from some of the neighbors who had, who had submitted, um, and there was concern about their septic and their wells, uh, and I'm, I'm sure you know this, but there's regulations with regards to placement of septic systems, proximity to wells, not only on your property, but on your neighbor, you know, in relation to your neighbor's property to make sure that all that, uh, you know, is, is set at a safe distance, uh, so you don't endanger anybody's, uh, well, uh, or their own systems. And, you know, the other thing I would just point out, looking at this, uh, this plan from Matt as well, is you obviously see plantings, but I, I think you can also see the significant amount of wooded area, uh, that's being left. Particularly, I know a neighbor, a buddy neighbor who, uh, submitted comments, uh, in opposition to the application, but if you look at lots three and four, which are the ones here on the kind of left corner there, you can see a significant wooded area around that lot and see that those houses were, were placed basically on the direct opposite side from that residential lot. And then a lot of wooded area was preserved along Monroe Turnpike. Um, those, those basins you see that are also down, there's one on, there's one on lot two, there's one on lot one as well. Um, while it looks like it's a cleared out area, uh, my client actually, um, also above White Tail Drive subdivision, it's actually like the first application I ever did as a land use attorney. Um, and if you go there, there's similar basin like that, and it has grown in very well. Uh, you could drive by there, uh, it has tons of wildlife in it. Um, so even though it looks, it looks clear, uh, and it may be in the picture, uh, that area actually fills in very well, um, and it's kind of, I mean, it turns into a nice natural area there that I think has a whole moment where the turnpike, you're going to have a nice buffer there on top of, you know, the grades we're going to have here too that, that set this, you know, low water. And again, as Jason said, this went through an extensive wetland process, uh, it was multiple hearings. There were many changes based on recommendations that were received from the commission, uh, from James, from staff, um, from Dr. Clemens, who was the, uh, the expert that the commission had retained, um, for that, uh, for that hearing. Uh, one lot was removed, it was originally a nine lot subdivision, uh, one lot was removed during that process. Um, and so there was a lot of care, um, taken during that whole process, a lot of changes made to protect an area that you can't really see as, as well on this, uh, on this zoom in view, but there's a wetlands area to the right and then a, should say ecologically significant area, uh, to the, to the, next to it, that would be to the east of it, um, that is now being preserved as open space. Um, again, 57.8% of this development, which I think is a huge benefit. And one of the huge benefits, I think, of this cluster development regulation, uh, what it forces to be able to protect areas like that. So with that, if there's any questions for, for Jason or myself, I'll have the answer. I'll see, I'll run through, is this, so the way this procedure now with the cluster development regulations, also your special exception standards apply, um, but I'll see that as a norm to for, for after base comments.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with the commissioners on my right for questions. No questions right now?
I have no other question, other than the native trees.
Uh, no questions. No sidewalks here?
Uh, no, no sidewalk.
Why not?
We didn't feel that this A lots really warranted it, no sidewalk, no turnpike, anywhere to really walk to.
And requiring sidewalks.
It's a requirement of the, of the zoning agency.
We've been lately without applications, everybody says sidewalks go nowhere, but we've been lately requiring sidewalks. And you have no sidewalks.
Yeah, we are heard and not proposing any sidewalks.
So you're not going to put any sidewalks here?
We're not proposing two.
The other thing is, another question, what, um...
Sir, Commissioner, I just want to, so are you saying sidewalks along the road in the development?
Like, in the development and in front, and on 111. I mean, that's, um, um, property that goes down it. We've been, this commission has been requiring sidewalks now because everybody says sidewalks go nowhere. Well, they go nowhere because we never put them in.
Honestly.
Now, on all the developments that we've been, especially on the main corridors, we've been requiring sidewalks. And you have no sidewalks. Then I was reading something from the health department that it said you can't file this approval until the health department revises it or something like that in the letter?
Basically, they gave a conceptual sign off for the subdivision, which is enough for this commission to feel confident that individual permits for each of the lots for well and septic will be able to be acquired, but they don't review, they don't require a review of every single lot at this time. So, you know, before each lot gets developed, they will need to apply for new permits for each individual lot. They'll also need to apply for a zoning permit for each individual lot.
What happens if something changes?
What do you mean if something changes?
As far as the calculations are.
They have to prove out to the health department at this stage enough that these are buildable lots for wells and septics. So that's what the health department's original approval is, is that they have proven out enough that these lots can be developed with a well and a septic, but they don't have to provide specific site designed plans at this time, but they will prior to individual lot approval.
One other question to ask about the vernal pools that, I read from this. These are vernal pools on the property, are they not?
There's no vernal pool.
There is.
There's not, no.
There is not. And there's somebody, an independent person, did we look into all that?
Yes. We hired a third party, um, independent consultant, Dr. Clemens, who is very well-known for vernal pools and for his expertise across the state. And his original report had mentioned the potential of a vernal pool onsite. He sent somebody out, it, it was hard to, it's hard to tell during certain time periods, but he had told me that his expertise is that he can review them at any times of the year, he feels confident in that. So they went out and walked portions of the site where they thought there could be vernal pools and determined that there were no vernal pools.
They also lost the site before the meeting to double check, and there's no finding of those.
Right, so what, what vernal pools are only called, I was going to say, after the spring. Right, so you wouldn't know if they were there now or not, really, right?
You would know, you would.
Right now?
There would be good frog, that spot of salamanders, really. Other sites I'm working on, uh, kind of, you go, there's a, there's a, there's a little water that, uh...
So there's no, there's no species there, there's nothing like that, right? No species there that will be, that salamanders, there's none of that stuff you see there?
I'm looking for no pool species.
So then this guy just...
Bart, I was just saying, our other expert, Steve Dianzer, also went out in the spring, sir.
Can we have a report from the guy that, independent guy?
We have several reports and lots of testimony, and this was a very extensive report. Uh, no, but I can, I, I think his initial report is attached to actually one of the neighbor's comments, but he has additional testimony that is part of the inland wetland record, um, where he talks about how he followed up onsite, um, and that he does not believe there are vernal pools. And to your point, I asked the same question to him, hey, we're not in the springtime because wetlands was not reviewed during this time, it was reviewed during the winter. How confident are you that you feel like you can identify vernal pools? And he said, very confident. He said, not everybody can do it, but he feels like his expertise, and I think in the attachment to one of the letters, I think, out of the 40 pages that are there, 30 of them is actually his resume, um, as part of it, where he extensively talks about his background in this.
Let's walk that from there. My, lucky me. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to say, I'm so pleasantly surprised with all your generosity that you've given back to the town on this one, I, I really appreciate it, the kindness. You also do have a, a, a big section of your, big section of your wetlands that you're donating back to the town, it's, I don't think you could do anything there but fish it, so.
Yeah, but it would be different if, if we were coming in and we were saying, here's our 30%, and it's all wetlands, that would be one thing, but it's 57.8%, it's wet.
Again, I appreciate, I appreciate that, I think, um, uh, I, I'm just going to give some opinions, and I think it's, it's something that is beneficial down there. I think that, that part of Monroe is, um, has the appearance of being a little bit older, and something like this in that area would be nice. Um, I don't mean to upset Commissioner Penecha, but, um, I'm okay with, I'm okay with the species of plants that you have there. Um, there's nothing in writing that says we have to be 100% native. Um, is it nice that, if we could get to that, I mean, I guess, um, but I'm, I'm actually okay with what you, what you currently have there. If you do want to swap some out for maybe something else, I, I, in my opinion, I don't think you need to remove all 21 and put in 21 native plants there. I'm, uh, I'm in favor of it. I do like the fact that you went with the bigger lots in the cluster subdivision, because you could have done something a lot, could have done something a lot smaller and... Um, I'm also in 100% agreements with Commissioner Ambrosi about the sidewalks, and, um, if you're going to make X do it down the road, uh, we'd like to stay uniform across the board, and we pretty much tell everybody to put sidewalks in. I know you're in an area where there's, you're not really connected to anything, but we've, we've made it a, a pretty big point going across with everyone that's coming in, the O'Reilly Auto Parts, the Starbuckses and, and, and all those guys to, to put them in. So it's, it's something that at least I will, um, ask you to put in.
On Monroe Turnpike.
The only difference I will say is that I think it's different for residential subdivisions, and that regulation, I believe, only applies to streets that are pre-aided and not for existing streets.
All I'm saying is we've asked everyone else to do it. We're gonna, I'm, I'm going to ask you to do it as well.
You're talking about on Monroe Turnpike then?
I mean...
It really goes, where do people want to be able to walk around?
Internally?
Dead end.
It's a dead end with eight lots.
I'm, I, I, I agree with Monroe Turnpike.
We're up in the middle of a dead end.
It's, it is a dead end, I mean.
Well, they're up.
If you want to, if you want to, if you want to walk, I mean, you can walk within your...
I think you're right, from the dead end.
Yeah. I definitely think it should be bare minimum on 111. That's, that's...
Mr. Clarification, Jason, are you talking about coming from like the new intersection heading south towards maybe to the intersection of Conant or something like that?
You got a, you got a, you got a pointer?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Point, uh, uh, next to here, oh, that's why I... So, uh, from somewhere in this neighborhood down to like the road intersection here is what we're talking about?
Yeah. Right, yeah, well...
It's a state right of way here, so it would be subject to DOT's approval here, so I don't know.
I'm sure, I'm sure you guys can make a phone call to DOT.
We can, I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying that anything we talk about now, it may be shown by them or may be changed by them. Um, there's also, there's, yeah, uh, there's, there's some serious power lines that come down right through here that they just replaced, uh, or they were working on replacing, so I'm not sure how that impacts my full, along with...
I've seen them work around power lines.
Yeah, again, okay, so, well, I'll discuss it with my client.
Please.
With James as well.
Yeah.
Because it does, the, which kind of, yeah, the property line pulls away from...
I also understand that there are some, some issues, but I'm also telling you that we've told everyone else to do it, and I, I feel that I'm going to stay consistent with it, and if I ask everybody else to do it, I'm going to ask you guys to do it as well. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, that's, that's, again, one of, one of eight.
And are you saying, are you saying 111 and the, and the, I almost say, the road we're proposing as well? That we're also passing sidewalks?
The, the, the road, I'm, yeah, I'm more concerned with the 111 part. The road being a dead end to me is, I mean, it kind of gives you all your security that you need and all the, if you wanted to, you know, you're basically going on that road if you live on that road. That's your primary thing.
As far as the new road, I, I wonder if the town engineer would want the maintenance responsibility to the sidewalks also, but again, it's a top maintenance concern down the road, um, so I'd want to get his opinion on it too.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm more concerned about 111 than I am with inside there. Um, couple of quick things, which I'm sure, I'm sure I already know the answer to, but you're also, you're okay with buses and EMS and fire trucks and all that stuff to, in and out?
In comments, we're saying they have no issue.
No issues, okay. And fire hydrants are going to be throughout wherever needed, or?
The fire marshal did have a letter in there, my chief. Uh, we've got a fire pond proposed here with a dry hydrant attached to it, as part of the wetlands application.
He was okay with that?
Yeah, he said that or a system of some sort, but we wouldn't, fire ponds, so.
Awesome. And they're all separate wells and separate septics and, thank you, man, I really appreciate it.
So the, um, the applications that we asked for sidewalks on have been primarily commercial, if not entirely, I, I can't think of one that has been residential. Um, I live on a road very similar to this with a dead end, we're on a dead end, and everybody knows, everybody on the street and everybody knows to drive carefully, there's not enough room to pick up a lot of feed. The roads are wider, there's no hairpin, uh, blind corners or anything like that, so the road is, in my opinion, very safe to walk on. I find that the sidewalk idea would be better suited within the subdivision, but in this case, not needed because it's a dead end. And then to put the sidewalk on, on that, on 111 Hill, it's open space next to you. I don't see a need for it. I get where these guys are coming from, you know, you got to start somewhere, I just don't see anything going on up that hill that, that it's going to connect to, and I think it's going to look funny and it's not going to be used. Uh, I wouldn't want to be walking along the side of 111 with trucks coming down the road and everything else, so I think it's fine the way it is. That's all.
I'll start on the sidewalks, I guess. So I also support the sidewalks going down towards 34, only for, well, two reasons, mainly one reason. Um, like Commissioner Ambrosi said, eventually they'll go somewhere, so I do suspect people in this may want to walk down towards 34, towards the Dunkin' Donuts, the shops down there, there are things along 34 people may want to walk down towards. I know the sidewalks don't fully go down there now, but once the, um, development next to this, maybe someday gets developed, better than what it is now, um, may have sidewalks there as well, so it would come down. I could also see people possibly wanting to walk down and cross over into the old Stevenson Lumber for events, concerts, they have a lot of things going on down there now, so that also could be a safer way to access that new development down there. Um, within here, the only thing I want to say is that the Ridge of Monroe did approve sidewalks inside. I know it's a little bit of a different situation, but they did approve, um, all these sidewalks on one side to allow people to safely walk, um, especially in the winter, it's snowing. So they did approve sidewalks on one half of the ridge inside, just food for that. Um, terms of the, uh, the wells, Kathleen, and the health department, did they talk at all about how the depth of the wells, what they're going to be? My only concern, and I know that's more inland, more wetlands, is the homeowners down there now, that I know of, have very shallow wells, and they go dry a lot. So I just... So I just worry more for the people purchasing. If they're gonna hit issues with not having enough water down there.
They would be required to meet today's regulations, which I can't really speak upon because that's, you know, the health department, but they would be required to. I don't know what years the other properties were built and what regulations were at that time.
Yeah.
Um, so they would be required to meet today's regulations. And again, the health department's conceptual grid sign off that they do believe that. It would be adequate to be able to install both.
And did inland rail owners review, um, this area after the giant storm in August as well? Because my concern is the right across the street got taken out. Yes, literally. So my concern is just any, any wetlands or up north of this. Whatever direction south of this, up the hill would be a severe concern coming into this neighborhood.
So one of the concerns was, this was originally proposed as a nine lot subdivision, but they wanted. The entirety of the wetlands on the right side of this page to be encompassed in not only open space, but also a conservation easement. So in addition to the open space on a majority of that, there's additional conservation easement. On top of it for additional protections for those wellings that are up there to preserve them, um, in perpetuity.
And will we see this in the next part of, uh, will we see any, um. Can't think tonight. Um, renderings of what the houses will look like, views from like Downs Road or Cotters Street? Are we not there yet?
We're, we're not there yet in this commission unless you make it a condition of the approval. Would not actually see the houses in the future. So it's not like a planned unit of development. It's not like twelve seventy one Monroe Turnpike or two sixty nine Forty Hill or. Um, two oh one Turkey Roost where it's a bunch of houses on one commonly held lot. This is just subdivided. In the same way that a traditional subdivision is done. They're not required to have a homeowners association because they're individual lots. The property owner will own the house and the individual lot as compared to all being part of a fund of declaration or something of the sort.
So with that being said, then who would control like the light pollution coming out of this development? Because right now. I travel down this area a lot. And Steven, I was gonna call Steven some, lack of.
We all still.
Been that my whole life. Um, the buildings, the lights have gotten brighter. They've gotten directed out towards the street. They're not dark. They're not aimed down at the street anymore. It is just brighter than can be.
I don't believe that street lights are proposed as part of this application.
It's just housing, general housing.
Just housing.
Okay.
Whereas, for example, twelve seventy one Monroe Turnpike, they did actually have, this commission actually approved street lights. You know, that were around it. They're, they were smaller. I think they're twelve, fourteen foot. They, you know, weren't really large. And they will be able to put, you know, a light on the front of their house and things of that nature, but.
But normal, just every day?
Just normal every.
Um. No other questions? Thank you.
Hey, um, we got another question.
Yeah, just really quick about, um, this, these three lots here on the side.
The bottom?
No, the, what's there? One on the bottom and then there's two up top right there?
Yeah.
That one, yeah. Um, on the backside. What's on the, there's houses on the other side of that?
This is down the river from now. There are really good railroad tracks against that.
Okay, so there's, okay. My only concern was because we hear about screening all the time from the backside, even though it's a, even though it's a, uh.
No, there's houses on Downward.
There's some on Downward, right. There's any right there. As far as I object to.
Yeah.
Uh, there is houses.
Yeah, there's houses.
There's houses. But we're not, if you look back at where the clearance inside there.
You guys are kind of far away.
Yeah, we, we try to maintain a buffer there, so. The house.
Oh, just because you know how sometimes we hear about. Screening and we can see and we can do all that kind of stuff, so.
What about, sorry, that, that house, where you are. Nope, go back up, point, to the right, up, that line.
For the left.
Right next to the, on the right, there is a house in a back lot?
Little area.
Yeah. Right there, right where you are.
Yeah.
Right there. There's a house from the back right there.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that those neighbors, I know they've been contacted, but they have. An opportunity because they're like right next to them. You could look back, there's like a white house, there's like a driveway.
I probably believe it's also on the screening.
I think there, there's a back of each other. I think there's a back.
Yeah, there's one here.
And then a back, there's a long driveway, yeah, there.
Yeah.
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 You can't see it from Downward, but there's a back lot.
Yeah, that's our, you know, this, this property actually. So, but we could do some sort of a, uh, big, say a buffer along that side, maybe.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, stick now, so I think if we.
Yeah, just to make sure of that, that would be appreciated. Because those, those woods down there are not that big. You can see right through them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I will also say that is a little deceiving as I do believe. That property is approaching on the applicant's property. So part of the reason there is no screening is I do believe they've gone beyond their.
Yeah, you can see a big backyard.
But the maps down there from back in the day are parts of really.
Yeah.
That area is crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't realize how, how. Far away the houses were from Downs Road anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't think that's just gonna be it. Able to hack us. Say it from there. That's the ones up there.
Well, it makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions up here?
House on five would be a local.
Okay, any other questions up here? So one of the, um, property owners. I think it's property owners, I think it sounds about the drainage. Maybe you could go over. Um, what do you expect to come out of one of those level spreaders? What do you expect to come out of the footing drains and what's at the end of the footing drain and? Um. Et cetera.
Not totally clear with the comment, which they should specify a lot in particular that are concerned or anything. General.
Three and, um. Four, the drainage from like three and four. So the, there's a property owner on College Street right below there and they're downstream from. Uh, those other two. Drainages systems.
Yeah. Lot four is, is, um.
Footing drain there?
That's a footing drain outlet, so that's gonna have a relatively low flow. It's only groundwater that would be here. It's a four inch pipe that discharges out to a riprap pad. It would be groundwater elevated, you know, sheet lab, high groundwater. Um, it's not rain, it's, it's just groundwater, but we can relocate that, um, and probably discharge it far lower this way. But that's, uh, you know, to alleviate that concern. So the drainage is just gonna come down and flow this direction. Um, it's gonna follow those contours. So theoretically, you should not know this way, but just to alleviate concern, we'll relocate that to come over, come out on this side.
Is there a structure at the end of the drain or it's just?
It's usually just a riprap pad. It's like a four by four pad of stone. They're basically, they've come out often. Uh, we discharge right into it, so, so slow it down. There won't be, not be much volume in there, but still it would be available. Uh, three, um, just started below. Um, the house is in here, so it's, it's starting this direction.
Is that a detention basin or?
There's a small, uh, gallery system for, I guess, portion of the roof there. I'm not sure exactly, but that's. Picking up the roof, but I think just the, the roof is all.
On the driveway?
Yes.
How do they work?
I don't know. The, 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 potentially, they're basically, it's like a septic system of a septic. It's a void, you create underground store. The water infiltrates some of it as much as you can. And then in major storm events, it's gonna overflow out. It comes out and go through the pipe and out. Uh, down at the bottom, we have a level spreader, which is. Sort of a, kind of a cascading effect.
It's a level spreader.
It's right. Uh, it's, it's coming out, it follows the contour, so it's going sideways right there. Um, so it will come out in, in one sheet flow across rather than being a concentrated flow.
So that's also riprap on a pad or?
The, either, sometimes you put a concrete curb in there, so it actually comes down to the end of that, uh, some sort of a, uh. But again, we can. That one is not gonna come towards that broadly, but, uh, we can still try to, to move it over. Um, and just to keep in mind, these are, are conceptual plants, so whoever comes in for building permit, they're gonna have to get this reviewed by James and engineering and. And, you know, so whatever we show here could change. Yeah, it could be curbs, it could be all of this, but James, the, the detention basin is gonna stay the same and, uh. Volume of water that's going to that detention basin is, for now, if they exceed that, they have to, to come up with a means of, uh. You know.
So detention basin there, number one. That drains under Monroe Turnpike, is that right?
That's correct. There's, uh, existing pipes that go under and then come out and go under Stevenson lumber. So there's one pipe here. And then there's just actually another one here. And another one here. Uh, we are discharging to this one. And to this one here. So we maintain, trying to maintain the natural flows as best as we can. So that's where the water goes now. So we're maintaining that and, uh, the studies indicate, uh, you've. Uh, calculations, uh, then, sorry. Uh, we're not, any, no increase in peak flow or, uh, or, uh. Uh, velocity volume rate, anything, uh, a hundred year storm event, I think that's been reviewed by James.
So there's no increase in peak flow in a hundred year storm, I think?
That's so.
By the impervious surface.
Yeah. So we retain it and let it out at the same or slower rate than what comes out now.
Yeah, I mean, whereas right now, it's sheet flowing, you know, right?
Yeah, right now, yeah, right.
The whole side will go down, so.
It, it does provide control and in fact, the roadway itself is, and these houses will act as somewhat of a curtain drain to, to be water that's low a little bit. To help with, you know, oversaturation of the soil as well.
The box culvert there that you have.
That's over here.
Under the road, yeah. I missed the inland wetlands, um, meeting. Is that? Friendly to amphibians and?
Yes.
That was a.
Fisher, um, uh. Another news ratio, that deep mass that we. We advise the designer numerous times to, to meet that standard and that's a standard that allows for passage of wildlife. And we also created a second career crossing, which is just a dry pipe that allows for, for passage of, you know, wildlife.
Pipe.
Actually, it's a pipe that's set offside, offset of the, um, culvert, so it's a, it's a dry passage so that they can go through that. Matt could probably speak to that better than I can as to what we use. It's possible.
Back to you, Tom. Um, you know, at that crossing. Here. It's very unlikely that there be any, it's, it's moving through there. One of our families kind of up on the hill. And there was, um. Well, I, as, uh, Dr. Clement wanted to know what was across, uh, the number eleven here. If, if the, if there was a wildlife corridor across the street that we should be concerned about. We go out there now, as you stated, that it's totally disturbed. I guess they're re-disturbed.
Well, the pipe goes under Stevenson, I believe, and then it comes out at the other end on Mondo property, behind Mondo property.
It's all opened up now, right? Yeah, it's all, it's all open up. And then there was, uh.
It's open up now?
It's all, yeah, it's all, uh.
It's gonna be replaced?
They're working on it because of the storm. At the outlet too, there's a drop of about, maybe a foot or so. So any salamander comes out. From, you know, from, from down here on this leg. Wouldn't be able to get up that lip into the pipe anywhere.
There, there was a whole, I mean, we talked about that for extensive amount and, and. We talked about what was going on below that side. Dr. Clement said. Well, if it's piped for as long of a distance as we thought it was, that that would be a significant different, different, difference and it is.
Of course.
Now, it's collapsed, so that.
So we don't know what that's gonna be over there. That's a whole nother application.
We don't have the test now.
Yeah, for salamanders.
They're, they are remediated. They are working with staff to remediate it. There's gonna be a series of stormwater basins and replacement of pipe in some locations and things of that nature. It's not gonna be exactly what was there before, but it's gonna be similar, but, uh, it washed away any wetlands that was there. Um, it was unfortunately a really big impact from the storm.
And who maintains the detention base? The detention bases require maintenance? They're planted, is that right? Does, will they have riprap bottoms?
Um, they are planted. Uh, there is an area that has a riprap bottom in the four bay.
That's four bay, okay.
Yeah, that's the area to the, the, it's gonna shade in each base. That would be a, the stone bottom.
And how are they?
And then there's the.
Who maintains them?
Uh, in this case, the town, it used to be that the town would take that responsibility. Uh, now that's been changed and they put it on the homeowners, so. Whoever owns the lot owns the basin and the maintenance. So there is a maintenance plan, um, that we concluded, uh, for, for them. So that James will have to review that and agree to whatever it is. Probably assuming, assuming the public land records along the. Drainage easement, the town also has drainage easement so that they have a right to drain through there. Uh, it's just that the homeowners responsible for maintenance.
The homeowner is gonna maintain those.
They'll, they'll be the ones that are responsible, yeah.
I mean, most importantly, the town would have the right to compel them to do that if for some reason it was an issue in the future. That's why, or they could, themselves if they are. Or they, the town would have the right needed to go in there.
What type of maintenance are we talking about? Dredging and?
No, it's, it's mowing.
Okay.
Making sure the outlets are clear. Um, refreshing stone if there's needs to be, if there's erosion, fixing that litter. Litter, yeah.
Trash, that kind of stuff. Yeah, it's like an annual thing. It's not something that has to be done. Basis is for long-term.
Trucking dock. Trucking dock. Have anything else up here?
No.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The, uh, the, the sheet mix that we're seeding the basins, they'll probably get maybe moved once a year, once every two years.
So you have a lawnmower down into them and up again?
Probably weed by.
Weed by then. The riprap has to be maintained though. You don't want that filling in and.
I just have to make sure it's a thorough present.
Okay. All right.
Is there a provision to put in a date so that the homeowner knows that?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be a, a maintenance agreement and a, and an easement. The town's gonna have a drainage easement over that, but they'll require it before they allow us to report the subdivision now, I imagine. So that maintenance agreement will likely be part of that easement, I would expect. Um, that's gonna be up to down staff and attorney to finalize and hard term, but that's what I would expect to happen.
And then it's in, and then it's in a title, so it'll be there in perpetuity.
Yeah, it's there for.
Sideline, what is a drainage easement? That the town has, I mean.
James is on, and if I have him here, I would rather have him explain it since this is his.
Yep.
House.
Yep, so, uh, for the record, James DeMayo, town engineer. A drainage easement is. Um, allowing the town to discharge, uh, water that. Basically falls on their property onto somebody else's property. Um, and. It, it doesn't always go from the town, like, uh, individual property owners can't have drainage easements over each other, things like that. Uh, but because the road is going to be turned over to the, to the town, um, we, we would need a drainage easement over that property.
So you can get in there and check it and whatever.
And.
Or even establish it.
And, and, and have a legal right to discharge our water in that location.
Off the road.
Off the road, yes. So, so because it's new, so. Any, any new development like this will have drainage easements and things like that associated to the roadwork. Um, the only time that you don't see it is in older properties and developments, you know. Where, you know, the, the road went in a hundred and fifty years ago and the road's always been discharging water there. There's just a, a, you know. Uh, historic right to do that, but when we create new properties like this, we're gonna establish a, a clear and defined drainage easement.
Okay, and the, um. Fire pond. Is that town owned also or town maintained? Or a fire department maintained?
Uh, that is actually a really good question. I, I'd have to talk with the fire marshal over the maintenance of that. Um. And how, what he would need for maintenance on that. Um. But we, we will, we'll have that answer in the next meeting.
Okay, great. I mean, I'm just concerned with drainage on this site more than anything else.
Yeah, so, so it, as the applicant stated, we previously went through this, uh, in a lot of detail. Tried to, there's multiple analysis points on the property. Which, as they indicated, they're, they're reducing the peak flows and volumes to, to all of those drainage points. Um. And, and they're demonstrating that through engineer, you know, common engineering practices.
Okay, well, you're happy with it, then I, I guess I should be. I have another question. So the, um, conservation easement, that red line, is that the conservation easement?
No, that's, um, Jason, that's the wetlands, water would set back on the wetlands. Conservation easement is the CE, recent CE line here.
Show that above in the northern part, alright, so.
It was, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's along the red line there.
It's somewhat.
So now those property owners. That have a lot of their backyard in a conservation easement, what does that mean to them? What? What is, in a conservation easement? What, what is, in a conservation easement?
Their backyards are actually, conservation easement doesn't show up on.
There's another one that does show it.
It does show it, yeah. There it is. So the conservation easement is the CE line here, this is, you know, here. So the red is, is, uh, 100 foot wetlands review area, so any, any area would have to go before the wetlands commission or staff review, but most likely in the commission, uh, so that's why we're outside of it.
There's nothing that homeowner has to worry about?
It's not an easement, no, it would, it would be regulated activity.
Review area, yeah.
Or it would not be restricted by any easement.
Any, uh, final commissioner questions before we go to the public? None?
Yeah, I do. Um, just 'cause I don't know and I'd like to educate myself on this. You said you have a fire pond. There's no chance that I go in dry? Or is that pond like real deep? Like, I, I don't know anything about it, is the reason why I asked.
It's, uh, if I, I have to verify this, but I believe we, we dug it below where the water table was found, so it should fill up from that level. And also, I think it takes road drainage as well, so it fills up from the road drainage. Um, I could be, I'm not 100% on that, so I'll check on it, but the idea is it's gonna stay full based on one of those two guys.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't know how, how they, uh, below the water table.
Yeah, the bottom of it will be below water.
Deep as up?
Um, it's like 16 inches on this.
I think its measurements aren't there.
It's on there, yeah.
We did, just so you know, we did one on Whitetail Drive too.
Yeah, there's been a list in town. There's a detail, the plan said, I don't know what more detail on it, if you want to pull it up and find it.
Just wanna see how deep it is.
Yeah, we gotta get to it.
Well, the one on Whitetail Drive is?
I can also read it.
And they were saying the one on Whitetail is not dry, hasn't been dry or?
The bottom elevation is 290, lower top is 300, so.
I mean, you, do you test it? Do you check it? Do you, every so often? The one on Whitetail, when was the last time it got checked?
Kelvin? Well, there's a, you have a system there to.
If you're gonna talk from back there, you gotta come up to my.
Mike Chisnawski of James Lane Development, um, at 145 Cutler Farm Road. But originally, uh, I've lived on Whitetail Drive. Before that, it was just a private driveway. Um, we do, we dug a pond there a long time ago and, uh, we, uh, measured down, it was approximately 96 inches deep. The fire marshal was good with that. And we ran the, uh, catch basic, uh, a structure inside that sits in the, on the bottom of the pond and a pipe is screened, you know, rapwood screening, uh, inside that structure and it comes out towards, uh, Hammer Town Road. And, uh, we have a stanchion right there that he can hook up to. And they did come in with the fire trucks and tested it out and they get lots of pressure, lots of work.
They, they don't get tested regularly? They don't get checked?
That's up to the fire marshal, but, you know, it's, it's still working and I guess they, they, they're testing it out, I'm not sure. I don't live there anymore.
I totally understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can follow up with the fire marshal and ask him some of these questions.
Okay, Dave. Okay, that's it for the commissioner questions. We, we'll go to the public then. If any members of the public online or in person that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. We'll have you come down to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please sign or put your name and address on the clipboard. And please address the commission, not the applicants. Thank you. And then come on down. Come on down. Beautiful.
I'm gonna actually stop.
You could spin that around, it should.
Not as tall as John.
Thank you very much. Pretty quick chat. I am Paula Jelli. I live at 290 Cottage Street. I am the property that, oh, it's not up there anymore, that borders houses number three and four. And I haven't heard a good answer yet and how the water dumping out of basement number two, it dumps out on Cottage Street. I pick up trash between my house and the corner, the inside corner of Cottage Street. And I have a storm drain in front of my house, which that eventually will go to. But that gully is mostly silted up in grass. So how is that going to just have water out in the street? Um, are you gonna, is the developer or town gonna dig that out and put in? Is it called riprap or somehow not have that inside corner of Cottage Street before it gets to my house all flooded? Okay. Here we go, my speech. My name is Paula Jelli. I'm at 290 Cottage Street. I'm against the proposed development. As inland wetlands commission, the chairman of inland wetlands asked the developer if they protect my property and the developer answered in the affirmative, but did not explain what and how. Can they explain that now? About that footing drain, if it's on house number four, it, that hill does flow into. I have layers of French drains, one behind a retaining wall, uh, footing drains and downsfall drains. And I still get lots of water. I had 29 inches of water in my basement August 18th from a storm last year. Okay, cover it down. The developer agreed to move the road further north on Monroe Turnpike to lessen the impact on wetlands. But the revised application still shows the road aligned with Old Zorn Road. According to the Department of, uh, Department of Transportation, at least 400 feet between streets. And there's 688 feet between Cottage Street and Old Zorn Road. So there's still wiggle room there. Regarding, um, Commissioner's Anitia?
Yes.
Uh, about the red cedar trees? There's lots of cedar trees right behind my property on house number four that have died. I have a mature cedar tree that's at the end of its lifespan. I don't know what kind of cedar it is. I do see new seedlings coming up. So I don't know what is killing the cedar trees on lot number four right now. So somebody needs to check whether those are red cedars or white cedars or if there is a problem that red cedars is not a, a good choice. Also, with every meeting on inland wetlands, not every meeting, but just about, when it came up about the plants and native plants, they have assured us that they will change to more native plants. But still, here in this meeting, they're propose, propose, you know, proposing still dozens of this, uh, pine tree. If they really haven't done what they say will bring and make them native. So what makes you think now that when you require more native trees, that they will actually do it?
Let me answer that for you.
Thank you.
I'm not either in favor or not in favor of native trees. Native trees, it sounds like a nice name. You think that they're beneficial, but they're more beneficial to birds and other animals and not too beneficial to human beings and farmers that have fruit trees and all that. So I'm for a balance instead of putting 100% or 95%, more of a balance that takes care of everything. Uh, so that's where I, instead of having 95%, if we cut down and spread to other different kind of trees, might be beneficial for everybody.
Excellent, thank you. These ones are wildlife corridor, especially, uh, to, to the wetlands, to the south. I have provided you in my package of all kinds of amphibians. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I've provided you with pictures of gray frogs, wood frogs, uh, fowls, toads, American toads. And they all require berna pools. And the, um, developers, wildlife experts suggested that the swampy area in 41 Crown View Drive actually was the source of these amphibians, including the salamanders. We have a dusty salamander population there. They are very rare. There's a few handful of populations in Fairville County. So I really appreciate setting aside 18 acres. But my point is that if these frogs are on my property and I have provided you proof, not only, uh, just a picture, but when you take a picture, you can also scroll up and prove where it was taken. And I have provided that to you in my package. So that pond, that swampy area on 41 Crown View is about 2,200 feet as the crow flies from my house where I took these pictures. But in particular frog, they don't go beyond 1,500 feet as the frog flies. But as the crow flies, my suspected area of, you know, where the berna pools are behind houses seven and eight, that's about 1,100 feet as the crow flies. So, so wetlands, um, expert and the developer hypothesized it been correct. So I think that where's the berna pool that my frogs are on my property? The only option is behind houses seven and eight. And I've also provided you with an article about berna pools. Some years, they don't show up because of weather conditions. Other years, there's bumpers. But the only true proof is if you have the animals, the frogs, the crew, is they need a berna pool. I don't, I've looked on the TIS maps, I can't see any other possible berna pool. Also, there are skeleton walls in front of my property and then continuing on in front of houses three and two. And there's plenty of stone walls in the conservation area. They'll probably leave that as, as they should. But what's gonna happen to the dry stone walls, the historical dry stone walls that's on property number three and two? And I'm not sure how far it goes up, you can't see it from the roof. And I appreciate, I would really appreciate sidewalks. But at the moment, I don't have a dog. She died about a year ago. And I'm working on getting another dog. And whenever I have to walk my dog, I have to drive to Harriet to walk my dog. I can't walk over to the downs road area to walk my dog. And now as a 67 year old woman, I'm not gonna drive down to the areas that I used to drive to, to walk my dog. To the old railroad tracks, Pepper Street. I'm not gonna walk that area alone. So I would appreciate, when I get my next dog, which I'm working on, I would appreciate sidewalks, not only on the low turnpike, but at least on one side in the neighborhood. And so many people in Monroe, as you know, we want sidewalks for various reasons. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else here in person that would like to comment? Or if anybody online, please raise, press your, raise my hand button and we'll identify you. Are we seeing anyone?
I'm not, but I know these names and I'm very surprised.
It's okay if they don't raise their hand.
I know, I'm, I'm just, I'm always fearful they don't know how to raise their hand. Um, it's a little icon on the bottom of the screen. Looks like a hand.
Okay, people online, there's a little hand at the bottom of the screen.
I don't see anything.
If you press your arrow onto that hand, it'll go up and we'll see it.
You should actually see a little pop up on the corner, but it doesn't always do. Anytime soon.
None? Okay. All right, now let's get back to the, um, applicant. If they'd like to respond to any of these concerns.
Can I just? Yeah, closer. It just gets a couple comments and to address, one, one on the berna pools, again, we had Matt Pop take a look at it. He is wandering springtime. We have had Steve Danzer look at it. Um, we've seen Steve Danzer, uh, another expert to look at it. Also went during springtime to examine that. The wetlands commission hired a separate third party expert to look at that, uh, to look at berna pools as well. And he also, um, determined that there were no berna pools on the property. So I, I, I don't know what else can be provided for a special testimony on that issue if there is no. Uh, Matt suspects that it's a drainage basin, right? That's located offsite, detention basin that's located somewhere offsite. Um, that, that is probably the source of that, but it is, it's not on our property. Um, with regards to, you know, just buffering, uh, Ms. Jelli's property, I'll just show again this map. Uh, I said this in the initial presentation, um, you could, the cursor's not showing up there. But, yeah, it's not the most, but I, I think you know where her property is down there in the bottom left. And, um, you know, maybe actually, well, let me just show this map first because again, if you look at house three and you look at house four, um, you can see that they're as far away from that property line as we can get. And we're trying to leave as much of a woodland area, um, uh, that we can. Um, but then just to show where her house is in relation to that, there should be, there's the, yeah, okay, there you go. So she's, uh, on the very northern side. Her house is on the very northern side and now you can't see the house. So, um, you know, that's, again, we've, we've tried to locate that on a sizable lot, um, and locate those dwellings, uh, as far as, um, we can for her house. And, and again, I, I said this, but just repeat, with the, the area that we conserved, that was an area after long hearings regarding that area, um, with, uh, Dr. Clemmons, uh, who's the commission's expert, at that point about how that was an area that was particularly, uh, ecologically sensitive. It was where they thought the salamander was, right? That the salamanders concentrated. So that was one of the driving forces of putting on a conservation easement in that area because that's where they were suspected to be concentrated. Uh, so just, just so, and they agreed there. So that, that, just so you know how that conservation easement came about, it wasn't just the wetlands. It was also that there, it was a separate wildlife area. Um, but other than that, I don't, is there anything else that you don't want that?
Yes. Matt Pop again, um, that basin would be, is a detention basin off the site and I think it's right about here. And it, when I went up there, went up there a couple times, it's got standing water, it's got cacti, uh, below it. And now there, there's a wood frog on this site. That's where I thought it would come from and I think Dr. Clemmons, uh, also thought that would be where it would come from. I think Dr. Clemmons did find like a wood frog up in its vicinity. Again, uh, detention basis, I wouldn't classify it as a berna pool. Uh, it's kind of more of a decoy pool, uh, where amphibians are gonna breed in and we try out. Uh, so that's something we try to avoid. So that's something we try to avoid. This area right here, which was, it has a vernicle shape. It's not a vernicle, has no standing water. And it's got like, right currently, right now, it's got two intermittent border courses running through it that are about, you know, three, four inches in depth. I do have middle traps in the car that I keep in here. So I have to go to a site and put middle traps out to check for vernicle species. I have an estate permit to do that. Again, there's no vernicle pools on this site.
Matt, do you also want to talk about tree types?
With the evergreen trees, I usually use evergreen trees for screening. We've got many types of native evergreen trees. White pine is a good one, but decent lower branches. And over time, they grow fast, they break. That's why I have to be far away from the road. Red cedar, again, another great tree, but it's got somewhat short-lived. As the neighbor that had testified. Henlock is another one, but I don't use anymore because it's low-yield, it's a tax den. There's American holly, tough, very tough to buy. There's not, availability is not that, not that. There's tough to buy because of availability. So that's why I use Norway spruce. They're not invasive, they're thick, great for habitats for owls without owl party. If there's a standard Norway spruce, I'm always in there looking for, you know, owls in there. Great for screening too. So there's only very few evergreen tree types that you can use for screening that are needed. So that's kind of why I jumped to Norway spruce.
We would accept, you know, conditional approval. However, the commission found, it seems like maybe there was some discourse about that, but we would leave it to you in whatever you decide on that. But that's the reasoning behind it.
Maybe you can use white spruce. White spruce are fine.
Attorney Russo, I have, I believe Ms. Jellies' first question, she was concerned about the stormwater management from properties three and four. Water kind of cascading across her property. Can we explain that a little more in depth? If you could be a little more comfortable that that's going to be rectified?
But she spoke about having French drains along the backyard in different levels retainables. My understanding of French drain, it would be more of a groundwater drain. It would be intended to help with groundwater problems. The development above is going to help with that more than anything. Because this road, there's set water. They'll be putting drains on the houses. They'll intercept some of that groundwater and put it to, away from her house. We're discharging this way and this way. Whereas right now, the water she flows down and comes right down the hill in the backyard. Any of the water off of our pervious surfaces is being redirected into this detention basin or to this little discharge here and then piped down and discharged. This water flows this direction. So whatever comes out of here is going to go towards, towards the no-turnway. Up here, we have the one-footing drain, which outlets here. As I already said, we can relocate that to the other side of the property so it does not go anywhere near her. Comes out over here. I don't see, again, these are all subject to final building permits, final plans. So what you see here is theoretical. These could change, but that'll have to be, you know, reviewed by the town engineer and something that's maybe noted in the file if that needs to be, that drains not be diverted that way. But in practice, we would never want to outlet it right above the neighboring house. Anyhow, we try to divert it, so it would become a problem for a neighbor.
And does it just, what does it actually get diverted to? Is it some type of gravel basin? Is it just daylighted or how does that work?
If the grain would be daylighted, that's going to be a relatively low flow of just groundwater. It would come out of a forage pipe, you know, discharged into a stone pad essentially. So it'll come out and bubble out and then disperse on the ground like in wood. Any of the impervious surfaces are going to be captured by drainage structures and then put underground or back into the ponds.
Overall, less water is going to be cascading down into her property?
That would be my, yes. And that's designed here, it should be less water coming down now. In the future than there is now. Yeah, I mean, the driveway as it's shown here is going to, you know, it'll pick up service water as well as, you know, groundwater if there's some other drain on the property.
Now, I have one question. Did you consider having the road come off of Downs Road, thereby avoiding the Wetlands crossing?
We did. We went through this pretty thoroughly with Wetlands, but there's sightline issues coming off of here. This goes up rather steeply. And there's also some zoning issues and separations to the intersection. I don't have it with me, but there is photos that I have of where this would have to come out if it was to meet code and beyond Downs Road. And it's, you know, it's a steep hill, narrow road.
It's very narrow.
It wasn't a safe spot to come out. And I believe it doesn't meet code for sightline. That's where it comes out to. So we couldn't make the sightlines work. Over here, we looked at various locations here too. DOT instructed us that they wanted it to come out opposite of Old Zor to the best of our ability. They didn't want it moved. There's also separation distances from other run-off sections that we had to maintain. So again, the area was obviously, we had to cross over Wetlands here. It wasn't really the ideal spot to do it, but that's where DOT instructed us and that's what.
You met with DOT earlier?
Yeah, we went, or DOT very early in the process to try to get their opinion on where the road would go.
And sightline issues on Downs Road cannot be humiliated?
No, not without, you know, taking more property and eliminating the entire downwind. Would be possible to.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mike. One question.
Yes.
Be fire, I forget what it's called.
Fire block.
Fire. Thank you.
Yep.
How far, is that just for this development? Or can other areas use it? God, whether it's a fire like an Old Zor or another area down there. Okay.
It's in the town's space, open space. And that is, I'm talking with Matt here too. That's a very wet area there. Doesn't have to be very deep like water. It's going to fill up right away once it's digged.
All right, thank you.
Okay, it's still in public participation. So if you have another question, please come down.
Can I leave that out, please?
Once again, name and address for the record.
Paula Jellies, 295 State.
I might have to walk up to point. Oh, there you go.
The road does not affect water flow on my property. Eastern corner of Lot Three comes down this way. This way. And I had two inches of water coming on that side in the storm. So there's a lot of water. So there's really not any retention here. Water is coming this way off of Lot Four. So your explanation of all this road and the second detention basin is not protecting me. I appreciate, thank you very much for moving that footing, the termination of that footing drain. So I still need this addressed. But the hill is coming this way. So that very east corner of Three and Four is coming directly down on my property. How are you going to handle that? Thank you.
I mean, just to, I mean, water's going to go down the hill. It's impacted by that runoff. Now, if we were to do nothing, it would continue to be impacted by that runoff. What we're doing here is going to capture any surface water and pick up the drainage that's coming down there now and divert some of that away from the house as it is. We wouldn't generally stop any natural flow of water that's coming off the site and going that direction. It's not usually what we do. So maybe we'd capture anything. We would create, any runoff that we create here, we would divert in, away from her property.
Would it be an unreasonable ask at the time of construction to put some type of a subsurface, but close to surface curtain drain along that property line? That could pipe into the current management system?
Yeah, I think we're okay with that. If we want to show something, we can show something conceptual there for the next year and see if you guys can see. And having to be under, maybe under the direction of the town engineer at the time with permit, he could have.
That sounds good.
That's fine.
So I believe we're going to keep the hearing open. Would you like to say any few words?
Yeah.
If you, I'd like to just do a quick review.
I got something you want to say.
That's correct, what you mentioned. Well, you would have to increase the infiltrators and then pick up the curtain drain to the infiltrator.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part I want to say.
Well, it was just discussed. That's the remedy to help her condition. Curtain drain, increase the infiltrators to pick up the extra water.
Anything that we picked up with that curtain drain would be groundwater. So we don't have to retain that. It would just be diverting it around. So we're not, we wouldn't pick up service water. That wouldn't be the intent. Probably would pick up some because it would be a ground channel. So it would pick up some. But the intent would more be to divert, you know, groundwater drain, I think is what I was thinking.
It's a solution for everybody.
There is curtain drains on the road too that's proposed. Going to be a lot of groundwater picked up. And I think it's going to be a better scenario. What's built and has control of the groundwater versus what's coming down.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Just to go through some of the exhibits, the Conservation Water Resource Commission did write. And also I do encourage the commission to read that in more detail. EMS had stated that they had no concerns. The town engineer and myself both issued memos. We received responses to those comments yesterday, so we just haven't had a chance to review it. So for that reason as well, we'd like to keep the public hearing open. The proving out of the conventional subdivision, I don't think I've seen it before, but I don't think this commission actually has paper copies of that. If we could have that actually submitted for the record too, that would be appreciated. Fire department issued a comment related to the fire pond. I will follow up with him to make sure that what was proposed is sufficient. I spoke to the police chief who said that they had no concerns. And we already discussed the health department. The zoning enforcement officer is required to do a violation review of the property of which he has issued a memo to this commission saying that there are no existing violations. And the tree warden is required to issue a review of that. We had a chance to review that. I also think there were some spacing questions with the trees. Were you able to, are you reducing the spacing to meet the requirements of the zoning regulations? Or my understanding is that this commission in the past has requested kind of a combination of the two?
We added more trees. Just to, yeah, we added more trees.
So you're now in the 50-foot plus or minus. I mean, obviously you have to take utilities in consideration and things like that. Okay, beautiful. The inland wetland commission issued both an approval for the regulated activity as well as a positive subdivision referral to this commission. And the rest of my comments, I will take a look at and address as part of my updates. And then there are several comments from the neighbors, which again, I would like to keep the public hearing open so this commission has the opportunity to read all of those in more details since several of those were issued today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also kind of add on real quick.
All right, yes, James.
Yep. In the latest submission from the applicant, they include, and if this was already discussed, forgive me, but I want to make sure the commission pays attention to it. The applicant has submitted some subdivision regulation waivers, waiver requests for certain items that are called out in the subdivision regulations. I have not had time to review all of them, but just be aware. And as commissioner, I think it's important to take a look and see what everybody's comfortable with waiving and whatnot.
We have the waivers?
In the most recent update, which would be the packets that you were given tonight.
So we'll have to review them. Thank you, James. All right, are we through? All right, so the next item in the agenda was the site development plan, subdivision plan.
I'm so sorry, just for the record. So we have to state this public hearing is going to be continued until the April 17th meeting. Can you just make sure we put the date?
And the site development and the CP2025-01-FL1278 was addressed within this SEP, I believe. Not necessary to be addressed separately.
Agreed.
There are no deliberations and determinations. There is new application. Kathleen, do you want to review that briefly for the commission?
Just briefly, this will be on for a public hearing on May 1st. The applicant requested it to be on for May because they are simultaneously going to inland wetlands and they will not be on inland wetlands until the second meeting of this month. So I believe that's the 23rd. So they wanted to start the wetland process before they came to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is an amendment to an existing excavation and fill application for 64 Cambridge. They're requesting a modification to reduce the net fill quantity and modify the method of wetland restoration. They're proposing to use a well method in order to replenish the wetlands on site. Staff is currently reviewing it. And James is doing a simultaneous review for planning, zoning, and inland wetlands at the same time.
Thank you. Other business pending meeting minutes. We have the minutes of February 20, 2025. Chair Lunt can't motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for February 2025?
Second. I have a motion in a second. All over the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meetings, minutes of 2:20 have been accepted. We do have some, we don't have any zoning thing, mad response. We have, do you want to go over the first light?
Yep. So we, unfortunately, because we didn't meet last month, we seem to get in a dange with a bunch of letters surprisingly over the month. So there's just a couple here, things here. First light CT, Husatonic LLC, Stevenson Dam Station. They're just required to notice that in the wetland commission, planning and zoning, if they intend to discharge at any point. And so they are planning to do that. So they're just notifying the town of that issue. There's several special exception permits, proposed text amendments, which has to do with a special design district for adjacent municipalities, both for Newtown and for Oxford. Oxford is proposing a new planned development district regulation, similar to some of the items that we have here. They're required to notify the adjacent municipalities. I've had a chance to quickly review. And I don't think they've got warrants additional follow-up, but wanted to make sure that this commission was aware of those items.
You know what the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit is?
Yeah, it's in order to actually discharge the dam. So it gives notice for the permit that they, so it's a permit that's issued by the state. It's not a permit that's issued by the local municipality. They just are required to give notice to the municipality because they're discharging to the Husatonic River.
Okay.
Basically, they're just saying that they've already gone through the permitting process, demonstrate that the discharge will not cause pollution to the municipalities. They presently discharge 18,920 gallons per day of non-contact cooling water. The activity takes place at 1 Roosevelt Drive in Monroe, directly downstream from the Stevenson Station dam. So it's just going through the regular.
Okay. And we have two further items. We have the CEO before and we have your commission report.
Yes. So the zoning enforcement officer is giving you his report for review. He is not here tonight as he is home with his two-week-old baby. So he had a baby boy. We are very excited for him. He will be gone a little bit this month. So a little grace as we are kind of doing double duty staffing-wise.
We hold this for the next meeting back up the bell?
He wanted to make sure, I don't know, he could maybe come in May, but he wanted to make sure, because there's a lot of things going on of what's here, to make sure that you guys had the opportunity to review all this, because I do know there's some of these properties that you all are interested in.
Do you want to address any of these?
Currently going on right now. We can talk about 604 Main Street, just because that's something we've talked about before. Daily fines have started to accrue for the property. They were given a citation, although they- They were given a citation, although they have done some remediations of some of the violations. They definitely have less vehicles on site than they did before. Sometimes they are under the total count. They still have vehicles that are larger than what's permitted on site. So at the moment, they have not remediated the violation in its entirety. 30 Williamsburg.
We are all fining them.
We are fining them.
That's the property of Bard Center.
Yes. So they are currently accruing fines. So if they're not, you know, the fines just accrue. And then, you know, they're not going to be able to move forward with any sort of development. So they close out.
Thank you.
Those citations. 30 Williamsburg Drive. There's multiple recreational vehicles parked on the property, these dwellings, as well as bite on the property. A season correct order was issued. Property owners have until April 25th to respond. I know that Thomas is looking at very, very closely and is also potentially working with our town attorney. So we are very aware of what's going on in that property and doing what we can to remediate what we can. 216 Cutler's Farm Road. That's an update for voluntary compliance. There is a fence that was improperly installed that is, you know, the incorrect direction. That's probably the latest violation that was done. And they're working with the homeowners to hopefully rectify that. That is, hopefully rectify a longstanding complaint that we've had. So we're happy to see that some things are being done, even though it's created a, an additional violation, but we'll continue to work with them. 235 Purdy Hill Road. There's unpermitted structures on the property. A phone conversation took place at the beginning of March with the property owner who said she and her family are dealing with some personal hardships, making it difficult to repair the structure identified as a holiday decoration and making it difficult to get rid of the trash and recycling on the property. A date of four, one of, was agreed upon to having the property cleaned up. However, no progress has been made. So I know that's a property a lot of people are very aware of. So I will have to follow up with Thomas because I know, you know, that had just passed this week to see what he would like to do as the next steps.
And 216 Old Newtown Road, are they actually going to be moving that material?
That is just the fence.
Sorry?
That, it's just a fence is the violation at the moment.
The Old Newtown Road, 216, page two. Do you know anything about that or should we wait for?
I don't know. So, you know, for Thomas, as he's saying, a home occupation permit. So I think it's like, I think it's a twofold issue. As part of the home occupation permit, they would put together requirements of what's allowed to be used, you know, on site. And if it goes above a certain threshold.
Violation.
If it's a home occupation, that's one thing. It's a home-based business that's required to come in front of this commission. So I think he's just waiting on details for what they're actually proposing to do.
They have storing equipment and materials on the property.
Yeah. Which is in violation. That's Thomas's report. We will hopefully have him come in May when he is back and is clearly up to speed and can answer a little more detailed question. My report is just a quick overview of the major items that are happening in town. Building permits or certificate of zoning compliance issued. 685 Main Street, the Dollar General Grocery Store is breaking ground. 205 Monroe Turnpike, the self-storage facility behind Aldi is also breaking ground soon. And then Legacy Lane, which is 1271 Monroe Turnpike, continues to develop individual houses. They're continuing to do construction and occupy what they have. So they're moving and grooving. The certificate of occupancy is the biggest one. A Starbucks was issued last week, so Starbucks is now open and functioning. We did have a minor site plan approval for 10 Victoria Drive for the Amazon facility. They're installing EV charging stations within the parking lot. So it's all within previously parking lot area. They're not creating new impervious surface. And their site disturbance was less enough that it could apply for the minor site plan approval application. And then we have changed, several changes tenant, 17 Enterprise Drive. There's a popcorn manufacturer going in there. 838 Main Street, Mama Rose's Mexican Bar Restaurant. 477 Main Street, Healthy Pet Outlet. By 51 Pepper Storage, Pepper Street is Storage Sense. 150 Main Street is Jesse Chang's New York. It's a retail establishment. 461 Monroe Turnpike is the Medical Arts Pharmacy. That's the old bank that was there that has the existing drive-through. They're not proposing to do any site disturbance. They're not even proposing to take out the ATM that's there. They are just occupying the building as it is. And they are turning it into a pharmacy. 440 Main Street, Milk Goes on Main. And 590 Main Street, Fat Enzo's T-Shirts.
Thank you. If anything else that we need to do? No, schedule a subcommittee meeting.
I would like to skip subcommittee this month because Thomas isn't here and we are working with him to write some of these regulations.
I think that's an amazing idea.
Okay, then chair and ten motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all over the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone. At 9:05.
Westland.
Aye.